And the school district of Holman acknowledged that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Hochunk, Sauk and Fox and Dakota peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Bunch.
Here.
Abigail Holtie.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Kadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Nead.
Here.
Maggie Smith here.
All right, with seven of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris says moved.
Second.
Kadija, a second to approve the agenda as published, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And we do not have public participation this evening. So moving on to reports and discussion, item 7.1, Holman High School Activities Director, Jason Luloff, will present participation fees for co-curriculars. This item will appear on the July 28th consent agenda.
Yeah, just go ahead and click on that. Oh, top bar there.
There.
Oh, cool. There you go.
All right. Hi, I'm Jason, I'm Activities Director at Holman High School, and this is a conversation that's difficult for me, but I think it's, it's time that we have it. Holman, looking at implementing some fee structures for, I would say sustaining a quality comprehensive activities program. I want to start off by just saying that like, activities are not just something that, that schools offer, they're like, a springboard to success for a lot of students, and especially in Holman. John Hattie did some research, and one of the number one indicators of future success is involvement in co-curriculars and a sense of belonging to something outside of the school that's school oriented. So as, as we know, there's a lot of data and stuff out there that shows that springboard into life, and, and Holman's no different. So why are we at this conversation? Being in charge of the comprehensive program we have, it's an interesting thing, like, when I'm speaking to other ADs in the area, and listening to like, what they offer, very rarely am I ever, "No, we don't have that." It's always, "Yeah, we have that, and we have that, and we have that, we also have that." And I think that's what makes Holman amazing. So I want to start there, and coming into this, I've always been proud of the fact that we've been able to get this far without activity fees, but I think this is a realistic time and place if you're looking at the landscape of the state, and then what other similar districts are sized that are offering what we're offering, are doing to survive. The Holman community is a survivor, we, we do what we can to offer great things, but eventually it becomes taxing on a lot of different people, and then obviously taxing on our resources. So just some of the reasons why trying to preserve these opportunities for kids, if you look at some of the things that we'd be maybe looking at cutting, but have like, some monumental domino effects, for example, volleyball starts before school starts, we already have like, the largest volleyball program on the west side of the state, and if we were to like, reduce there, there will be very well some people who will be told no, before they even start their school experience at high school. Because generally when you make those cuts, it's a lot of times a freshman class that, that is, that is hit there. We want to try and have some equity and fairness, although that can be a tough term to wrap your head around, we want to make sure that participants contribute to the cost of the experience, and then we would implement waivers for free and for reduced families to make that more equitable. We obviously want to be fiscally responsible as a district, and knowing that we offer things, there's a cost and there's resources and things wrapped around that, we want to provide a high value, which I believe, something that the entire Holman community wraps their, puts their, hangs their hat on. Regionally, there are already schools that have been doing this for a long time, and more prevalent are, like, our sister schools are similar size and similar offerings. And then, just looking to develop an understanding with our community and our families around the bigger picture of this, and just do a really good job communicating what this is and what this means, moving forward. So Holman's really unique. I did a data deep dive, and I just found these numbers here, and if you compare this to our MVC numbers or the regional numbers, we absolutely blow the tops off in participation. So sixty-eight percent of the people walking around in the high school participate in a co-curricular, that's a really high number, and, and if you go back to John Hattie's research, really significant to making a reason why Holman's a great place to be. And then forty-eight percent participate in a WIA sport. So WIA is a governing body of our overarching system, and that's fifty percent of our kids basically participate in the sport. Geographically, we're a little isolated, we're a bigger school, typically Division One, surrounded by a bunch of smaller schools, so some of our travel and our schedules, some of it's our control, some of it's out of our control, but we branch off pretty significantly. And then if we're speaking on a terms of lower teams, we don't necessarily always have the lacrosse or the other school that's pretty close to us to be able to provide us those opportunities for the low level teams, which means a little bit more of a So, in looking at a potential fee structure, what, what I'm recommending here is terming WI into two tiers, tier one and tier two, there simply are some larger costs associated with tier two. Some of that logistically on a, on a co-op standpoint, and renting facilities, more so than anything. But tier one would be your WIA sanctioned sports, except hockey and lacrosse, and that being a hundred dollar fee, again, free and reduced would be different. Tier two being a five hundred dollar fee, and if you look into the costs of those two sports at other schools, five hundred's actually low, if you were to compare it to a lot of other schools, typically this dollar amount's about five fifty, if you were to average out our sister schools for what they're asking for those two particular sports. And I'll just address the elephant in the room, why so much there? Our hockey co-op bill is almost seventy thousand dollars. So just to kind of give you, give you an idea of the significance of, of that particular participation. I'll also say that perhaps if you told a person who was interested in playing hockey that you only had to pay five hundred dollars, they might say, "This is, this is, this is a good day." So, service clubs and activities would be nothing, just any, any club or activity, and we would have to sort through some of these definitions with having conversations around which club falls into which category, but obviously if a club is providing a service to a school or the community, we'd not charge anything for that. A competitive club or activity that has a school support financially with either transportation or coaching advising or both would be a thirty-five dollar fee. And then there are some clubs and activities that have current fees, like, they currently have fees right now, those are very, there's reasons why they currently have fees right now, and we'd have to dive into what, what those fees are, and, and that would be the variable, there are not many, but there are a few, an example would be show choir. And then clubs and activities with minimal district funding, which currently is trap shooting, to name the, the most apparent one there would be zero dollars as well, because there's no funds going from the district to that particular club. Questions here before we move on? We can come back to this if...
If I could help, I know you say hockey, the cost was seventy-eight thousand, was that what you said? What makes up, like, what are the biggest contributors to...
Renting ice. Renting ice can be...
Hundred and forty bucks an hour?
Yeah, three hundred plus dollars a day. And then, you know, depending on how big your team is, you might have a practice that goes three to five and five to seven, it's, it's, ice is difficult. It's, it's, it would be a great thing to add to Holman, it's also one of those, it's also one of the more difficult things to maintain, because you have to keep it cool, there's, there's a lot of logistics behind having ice available.
It's tens of thousands of dollars just to keep the building cold enough to have ice, so.
Yeah. But, but specifically, ice rentals are very expensive. And then also, it's a sport in which you need multiple buses because of all the gear, or you need a coach bus with under storage, or like, particular travel arrangements that are, are not easy, plus, WIA doesn't have an extensive amount of teams around here, so like, our schedule can be three to, three hour commutes, similar with the lacrosse, like, our conference is three and a half hours away, is a conference game for lacrosse and hockey sometimes.
You see, transportation then is the biggest?
Well, so, for example, if you're traveling three and a half hours, your bus bills double or triple what it would be if you play a basketball team locally here, yeah.
But for all, all the other tier one and tier two sports? I think sometimes it's helpful to get a picture.
Yep.
As a parent, you're going, "Oh, five hundred dollar fee."
So hockey...
In hockey, but maybe what about some of the other sports that would fall under that?
Hockey and lacrosse, there's three WIA sports that have a limited number of schools that have those sports, hockey, lacrosse and gymnastics. We're fortunate around here that gymnastics actually has a lot of local schools that have it, so our travel is not really a burden, but hockey and lacrosse, our conference, like, our, our lacrosse conference to closest schools, like, two hours and twenty minutes, the closest school. Hudson's not a bad drive for our conference, like, if we had to go to Hudson for lacrosse. Hockey as well, there's a limited number of teams, so we have to often travel far for those games to get like, a regular season schedule. If you were to compare that to one of our other sports, like, we have a conference that's built here in the MVC, and our furthest travel is Toma, so, I don't know, is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah, yep, and so it's mostly hockey and lacrosse, I might have been reading those flipping them.
Yep, hockey and lacrosse, well gymnastics, hockey and lacrosse are, are three sports that have limited participation as far as like, the state of Wisconsin, but gymnastics locally is strong, so there's a lot of gymnastics schools, like, our MVC, almost all has gymnastics. But that's not the case in hockey, we don't even have a conference for hockey, and we're forming one next year, they're not our local, so all of our local teams are a co-op, so then we have to go far away.
Yeah, so does trap shooting compete, or don't they compete?
They do, not, not necessarily, it, trap shooting is that one sport that, you know, I would certainly say has followed the, the process, and is probably a, a future discussion on bringing some funding to them, but right now, they, they do that on their own, they transport themselves to the competitions, and they don't have a paid coach or advisor. But yes, they do compete, they have a state tournament, they, we have a lot of kids that partake in trap shooting, it's a really unique, neat thing, if you've never checked it out.
Jennifer, I'll also just share, the parents pay a lot of costs for trap shooting, for kid and trap, like, you have to have a separate membership to rod and gun, you have to, you have to pay for all of that as the parent.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out why it's not underneath a competitive club or activity, I guess.
I would say that that particular one, trap shooting, we help facilitate the, the kids' avenue to the event, but we really don't financially support it, does that make sense?
Sure.
Do they get letters?
No.
Yeah, they, the trap shooting came about, there's a process where if they're successful so many years, we can bring it to become one of our other competitive clubs, if we would choose to, so at this point, it's just not a district funded club at this point, but we support it in other ways.
Yeah, they, they started their, their journey a while ago, and, and had built numbers up to the point where they probably could be a conversation.
Yeah, I know it's popular, I just, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Can I, can I ask a couple more?
Yeah, go back.
What is in competitive club slash activity? I was just struggling to think of those.
Yep, so most of our competitive clubs or activities are the ones that have paid advisors and/or travel, so there's more cost associated with them because, so Quiz Bowl competes, you just, so there would be like, non-sports, powerlifting, Skills USA, there's some different things out there where people compete, and so they have like, a schedule, dance, dance is non-WIA, but they compete.
That's helpful.
Yep, and, you know, I think, and that's a great question, so, I think these definitions are, are pretty good, but we would really have to, or I would really have to have conversations with some of these clubs, and the leaders, to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding which category that they fit into as well, but it sets the foundation of us being able to categorize them, if that makes sense. There's just like, two or three that I think hinge on like, service or, you know, so we'd have to have that conversation.
Yeah, the one thing that we were also thinking through in this work was, we don't want to have it where students don't want to be a part of something because there is a cost, so we want to be very careful so that they still, because we have many students involved in multiple clubs and organizations, and we just want to be reasonable with, with that, and, because we want to keep our participation up because of the importance of it.
So then, moving over to the waivers and maximums, so, we're looking to move activity registration to Infinite Campus, if you've heard anything, we're struggling with our, our school got bought out by Arbiter, it's a big, long story, Arbiter said you can use our products as the our school product as you know it for, until twenty-six, twenty-seven, then in June, they said, "Oh, just kidding, Wisconsin, we're migrating you over right now." So we currently don't have a way to register students, I'm waiting for Arbiter migration, it seems to be taking a little longer than my liking, I started looking into Infinite Campus as a registration thing, which would be a cost savings, because we wouldn't need Arbiter, we already have Infinite Campus, I toyed with it for summer school, and I think we've got some kinks worked out, and we're currently working on Infinite Campus as our activity registration, that would probably go live next week. With that said, the nice thing about Infinite Campus is, basically, we'd have people register, like a store in Infinite Campus, there'd be a zero dollar fee, they would sign up for the things they want to sign up, we would then follow up after the season has started, or the activity has started, verify rosters, there's always people that sign up for things and get cold feet, or new additions, or whatever, verify rosters, and then apply the fee, then also, the nice thing about Infinite Campus, it already knows free and reduced, so when we apply fees, we can put formulas in that automatically apply the waiver. So it's a really clean waiver system, which is a nice solution to kind of getting in this debacle with Arbiter, and maybe we landed on something that's better overall anyways. But basically, sixty percent for reduced and free, free, for the waivers. And then, families wouldn't have like, a particular date to pay the fee, just imagine it as like, a, a student, no different than like, Chromebooks, if something like, breaks, you get something added to your student account as a fee, and then that has to be paid by the end of the year. So we would have time for people that needed more time to save the money, if, if that was their case, and then I'll also just kind of float out there, I'm not scared of helping people that need help, I could easily rally a whole bunch of people behind making sure that people get the opportunities that they need in this community, we just have to set up another resource for people to say, "I'm over here, I could use that too." So...
I think that was my big question, is having just the free and reduced lunch as the cutoff, I just know too many families who might not qualify, but still live paycheck to paycheck, and I mean, even a hundred dollars, when you think about it, pays for a, you know, a flat tire, it pays for shoes that they might need for, in a sport, so I really worry about that piece of it.
I would say, I agree with you, and I would say that I believe that we could set up a system that would really make Holman proud. I think, I think that that could be done in short order, the logistics of exactly what that is, I maybe don't have that answer right now, but I would say that, in working with the Booster Club and some of the other groups that I'm involved with, we could very quickly pull that together with, with this being, being passed, I would have a lot of confidence behind that.
I'll just jump in and say, I agree with Bridget's concern, I think it'd be great, like, if we roll this out, to have that baked in, like, if, they do that with field trips and other activities too, already, like, if this is a hardship contact, so and so. I also just wanted to like, zoom out for a minute, because I, this, even if like, all of the students you identified as being in an activity pay the fee, this is making up a gap, right? It's not even meeting, covering a deficit, right? It's, it's helping, but it's not solving the problem.
Correct, so, this is just, this is not funding at all, like, so even, just for our advisors and coaches, I would say four hundred thousand at the minimal, just for those, that the district, comes out of the district fund, and this wouldn't even be a quarter of that, and then we still have transportation, and we have, you know, facility fees, and so on, so.
So is there ongoing conversations around, because I think about like, yeah, it, you never want to see cuts happen, especially at a freshman level, and knowing that our local schools can't, like, districts can't support like, four basketball teams, and four or five volleyball teams, like, like, is, is there discussion around what that might look like in the future to have like, intermurals, or opportunities for kids to still have a sense of belonging, but have those opportunities? So I'm glad to hear, see you smiling, and I, I just...
Yeah, I just need a referendum, and we'll be implementing that pronto. Um, no, honestly, if you, if you look at our gymnasium spaces, they're utilized all of the time, if we had it open to eleven PM on Sunday, we would have people in there at eleven PM on Sunday. The amount of people that want to be involved in this community is outrageously awesome. Yeah, I, I have, in my mind, a perfect plan for everything you just said, it just literally comes down to the limit of facilities. And so, I think, I think there are some really cool ideas, but right now, I think we're doing a really good job with what we have. I think, obviously, there's that roadmap in the back of our heads, I don't think we're there at this moment, there's some hurdles that would have to be crossed, and I think the other thing is, like, whoever it asks, was it you who asked a que, someone just, before you jumped in, who asked the question?
Maggie.
Maggie, okay, I'm sorry. I think, so if I was to paint the best picture possible for you, our activities program started off smaller town Holman, and we had this type of a budget, this type of a support for coaches, and as programs have grown over time, we've just found ways to expand them, taking on more levels, providing opportunities for like, some sports, we don't max out the schedule, or we hadn't, because it's, like, soccer is a great example, soccer is hard to play the full WIA maximum schedule, it's hard on your body, it's hard on facilities, it's, it's not the best to maximize that, but sometimes, like, we get in these sports where we have so many kids out, and we'll try and maximize the schedule to give other kids opportunities to play. So, so we have, we have pretty much put every Band-Aid we can on sustaining the most opportunities for kids that we can with the least amount of money, and that would be the best way I would put it, and it's not that this would prevent us from ever having to fundraise, or like, there's a solution here for everything, I actually don't think any of that would change with this, what I think this does, is it makes our levels, it protects our levels to be a sustainable thing, like, for example, if I was going to come to you and say, "We need another coach, because we have sixty-five people out," and we wouldn't really have that ability to pull that right now, right? So I think what this model does is it allows us to not have to fundraise to keep four levels in the sports that need four levels, and three levels, and then the clubs and the activities that we offer that kids find a lot of value in, remember, seventy percent of our school participates in these, I think that's what this does. And I don't want it to be confused with, now that I'm paying this, I'll never be asked to do another fundraiser, although I will point out that some of the sports that do the heaviest fundraises are like, hockey, and some of these other sports, like, that would be a set fee that they would pay. So hopefully, that wouldn't have to be more door-to-door stuff, which is what some of those co-op schools do, and the community feels that.
You had mentioned that other districts...
Yeah.
Have this already?
Yeah.
I mean, are we talking a few, are we talking most?
Most, the ones that offer what we offer, so it's, it's not really an apple-apple comparison, because some schools will have a lower fee, but they apply it to middle school and high school, some schools will have a little higher fee than what we're proposing here, but they only apply it to the high school, some schools, some schools just start charging like, families a, a, a smaller fee, and everybody gets it, and you choose if you want to participate in activities or not, there's really no rhyme or reason behind it. Our peer schools, our sister schools are averaging more than a hundred dollars, they're typically, if they're, if they're a hundred or more, they're usually just the high school, and if they're less than a hundred, they're including middle school and high school. It's just, like, it's really difficult to, like, you would think there would be like, "Oh, we could just follow this model," they're very vast, and, and all for different reasons. I, I don't necessarily, I've talked to many, I would say of our sis, our peer schools, I wasn't able to find all of them, but of the ones I looked up, I would say three-quarters of our peer schools have some type of a system, really locally on Alaska and West Salem, two really close schools have systems, but people who offer what we offer almost always have it, we offer a lot.
Thank you.
I have a couple more. Would the fees, like, if this moves forward, would the fees be reexamined annually by the board? Is that the thought process?
I'm not sure, I, I, obviously, so I did a, a lot of data deep diving to try and come up with the number, I actually was able to project, like, what we can expect in every single club, sport, activity, and tried to like, tie that to, like, wrap my head around this model, right? I would say that, I would say anything we do, we should always be open to taking a look at and revisiting, especially if we think there's problems with it, but I think also, when you're introducing something for the first time, you make your best, you make your best data-informed decision, which I can share the data with you if you'd like, but you make your best data-informed decision, and, and then, and then you hopefully implement it, and then you probably are doing some type of a reevaluation, but I would say that if it, if it landed well, and you did a good job researching upfront, and, but I think anything we do as a school can and should be reevaluated if it's not working for us.
Procedurally, if there were an attempt to raise the fees at a later date, if this were to go through, and then we were to raise the fees later, would that have to come before the board?
We would bring that to the board, because that's something that is fiscally affects the budget, so, yes, we would, we wouldn't just raise fees without board approval, so, good question.
And I think, too, to, to a lot of, maybe you know more than me, but, in, in my research in activity fees, some people actually charge fees for like, trips in it, and field trips, like, when they sign up upfront, I was finding that in their fee thing, we, we do not do that, correct?
No, we do not, in most cases, in the majority of cases.
Yeah, another thing that I came across too, in looking at people's fee structures.
We try, and, and it's just like, we used to have multiple fees for summer school too, and we took those away, and then we used to have multiple fees for courses at the high school, and we eliminated those, trying to be, you know, everyone has the same opportunity without having to pay fees, which, I mean, we ended up adding quite a bit of money to the high school budget at one point to eliminate the course fees, because that's during the school day. So our reasoning behind this is, as we know, our, our budgets are getting tighter and tighter as funding changes for our public schools, and this is something, it's an opportunity for students outside of the school day, so we want... So we want to make sure we're putting all of our dollars tr- towards our academics and what's happening during the school day as much as we can. But we still know the importance of the out-of-school, after-school opportunities. Cause a lot of times when you ask students, what was your most favorite thing in hu- in school or high school, they say what that activity was outside of the school day. So we just want to continue to give, provide those opportunities to the highest level that we can. And this is just one of the strategies, um, that we had explored and Jason did a great job with the data, um, putting it all together and thought, you know what, let's, I'd rather, um, implement this strategy than cut opportunities for students, especially in most cases, it would probably be our younger students and our freshmen. And that's the prime year where we want them to be a part of having opportunities and meeting people in the high school, so.
I've spoken to quite a few of the like local schools. When you implemented this, what did you expect? What are some things? And I think what I heard back was, well, year one, just like any other year when you make a change and then year two, it's great. That's literally, literally what all of them said and that it's pretty smooth process, no one. They have their waivers similar to what we have and it's just, it just works its way out.
Have we talked at all about what would happen if, um, someone doesn't pay their fees, right? Like they have all year, if they get to the end of the school year, they have two hundred dollars in unpaid fees.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's handbook language already around fees and unpaid fees before graduation. I think it would apply similarly.
In our student handbooks, we have language around waivers in that and we would apply, like, cause we talked about free and reduced, but we have just any kind of waiver in general. So they would follow that handbook language and basically tells them exactly how, what they need to do. And that's for everything within, in the school district in that, so, um.
I just wanted to point out though that earlier I was saying that it wouldn't be that we apply the fee and it's due in a week. You know, you, you would have, if time was needed, you would have time.
Just like library fines. Sometimes they carry over, they carry over and then we continue to work with the family.
We wouldn't pull someone off the field or court, I guess is what I'm saying, because something hadn't been paid. We would let them participate and figure it out on the back end.
Okay.
On the preview, maybe the previous slide, you had nine hundred dollars per family. That's for the year, I'm assuming, right?
Yes, so of a maximum of nine hundred dollars per year per family and this is really gonna be, um, probably like the family that has a hockey and a lacrosse player or two or three hockey, you know what I mean? So.
Golfer and a hockey player and a lacrosse player?
What's that?
Is that your?
That's my situation, yes.
Five, or nine hundred dollar family max.
Seven bucks, yep.
And tha- and that's just to make it so that they, they just can't keep climbing outrageously if you happen to be involved in those ones that are, that are tier two, right? Like I think the tier two people, honestly, I think if you talk to them, they would have an understanding around, if that's the world they're from, which is why I kinda pointed to you, knowing that you have some of that, that hockey, um, experience. But I also think like going back to this slide here creates clarity for families who participate in tier two. Right now, we don't have that clarity and that anxiousness, I think, is problematic for our families. So the, essentially the way this works right now is they get a bill, they do some fundraising. The bill they get is like two thousand six hundred dollars per person for hockey. And then if they did a good job fundraising, that goes down. If they didn't, so I, 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 that's like one of the more difficult conversations to have with families. We're the only school in the area that operates like that and, and I think the other schools operate with these fees to figure out how to bring equity among the groups of people and I think, I think the tier two people, um, that, that are in that would, would have more clarity as, you know, what they can and can't expect.
Do you know how we compare, and you might not, to those other tier two schools that we co-op with? That make sense? Like they have a fee.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We co-op with West Salem, like for girls hockey, it's everybody, so.
The Onalaska Booster Club is, was built originally, I think, as a big hockey booster club and I'm pretty sure they charge two fifty for hockey. But I'm pretty sure the Booster Club and I, I might be wrong, but there's something where there's like some money given to like match that particular sport, so it's cost-effective. Um, West Salem owns the ice, so that's not a great comparison. Um, I don't know for sure what they have. But just to give you, um, Eau Claire, the Eau Claire School District is about two hundred dollars for winter sports and spring sports, a hundred dollars for a few fall sports like cross-country and cheer. And then hockey for them is four hundred and fifty. Um, Spash is five hundred and fifty. Menominee Falls applies theirs to students, all students, so they're at like a hundred and thirty-five, no matter what you are, middle school, high school and everybody.
Are you, are you proposing this for just high school or is this middle school and high school?
I'm proposing just high school.
Just high school?
Yeah, go on that route.
I guess my, my question is if I'm a parent from Holman, sitting in the hockey stands with another family from West Salem, we're hopefully paying a similar fee, right?
I would say most hockey fees are between four hundred and five hundred and fifty.
Right.
Um, yeah. I would say that right now, those Holman people are sitting in the stands saying they might pay two thousand six hundred.
Believe you're right.
The co-ops get difficult because depending on how many kids participate, you never know what the fee's gonna be. So it's, when he talks about bringing clarity to families, they'll know exactly what that will be versus not knowing from year to year. And it can really fluctuate from one year to another. So.
So regardless of the number of kids we have in the co-op, that'd be the same price? Regardless of the number of kids we have in the co-op, it would be the same price?
Uh, the co-op averages out to a set amount per player. Cause it all gets evenly distributed per player, but I think.
With the fee, it would be consistent, is what he.
That's what I, yes, if we have one kid from Holman on a, on a team of twenty-five players, that kid's still paying the five hundred bucks regardless of, or their family is still just paying.
Uh, we don't have a single sport in a co-op that would cost us less than a thousand. Yep.
I think my last question is more of a comment, but like, and I think you probably know this much better than I do, but when I hear from families, I think there's always, everyone has their favorite, like they have their thing, right? The thing their kid is really passionate about, the thing they love. And some, like I, I think I hear inferences that sometimes the thing they love isn't the, the favorite thing. It's, you know, it's the thing that costs more, it's the thing that we're having to reduce numbers on, seems to be a big fear. Um, so I know you mentioned like figuring out how different sports and different clubs fit into those categories. Um, and, and just talking about like if we do land in a place where there's like other changes to our activities needed, I, I feel like, um, like transparency on how we're making those decisions benefits us. So that, you know, if we're asked, we can be like, well, you know, we used this flow chart and it said, is the primary purpose of this organization service, yes or no, you know, and there was a really clear delineation. I think I just want to get ahead of like a perception that exists about there being like favorite activities.
Yeah. I think, um, if you take these definitions, that flow chart would exist. Cause there's funding from the school for a coach advisor or travel and then from there it would go. And then is this a WIA, then it goes this way? Is it non-WIA, then it goes this way? And then from there it would be, um, do you compete or travel? Or do you have a funded coach or travel? And then from there it would, that would be your chart.
Okay.
I think if you read through the definitions, that already exists, cause I, that's actually how I arrived at this. I kinda sketched it. Cause I'm always pegged as having one thing or another that I like better, no matter what. That's just part of the game. Whatever you've ever, whatever your background is. So yes, thought of that and I think that could be very easily done.
Okay.
All right. I think you're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks. All right, moving on to item seven point two. Executive Director of Student Services Jill Mason will now present the sixty-six oh three oh one agreements for Project Search and Project Bridge for approval at the July twenty-eighth meeting.
Good evening, everybody. All right, so, um, every year I'm excited to come here to talk about our sixty-six oh three oh one agreements. I'll start with Project Bridge. This year we only have one. Um, we are going to partner with Melrose Manduro for one of their students to come to the School District of Holman for Project Bridge. They are very excited. Um, the student did a tour. The family is excited for this opportunity as well. Um, in Project Search, we have several schools. We have Melrose Manduro, Onalaska Lacrosse and Bangor. So we have ten students. That's the highest we've had in several years. Um, I was with them on Thursday evening for their meet and greet, which was really exciting. The, um, the interns were all there with their families. Um, and so that was really a great opportunity. So these agreements allow students from other districts to come into these programs and vice versa. If other districts have programs, it allows, um, I know Onalaska's building a couple of programs and so once they're set and ready, they've talked about us being able to utilize this process as well. So, um, we're fortunate that we're able to do that and offer our opportunities to other districts, so. Any questions?
Any questions? No questions. All right, moving on to item seven point three. Jill Mason will continue with the sixty-six oh three oh one agreement for physical therapy. This item will also appear on the July twenty-eighth consent agenda.
Yes, so for the last couple of years, we've partnered with Onalaska School District for our physical therapist. Um, every year we kind of decide, is it the same? Do we need a full-time? Do we, you know, need to change things? And so far, we've been able to split eighty-twenty for the last couple of years. Um, even though our numbers have gone up a little bit, we still haven't needed to change our agreement at all. So it's fitting our needs and it's fitting the needs of Onalaska. Um, so at this point, we sh- we're the host district and so we create all of the invoices and then send them to Onalaska and then they pay us back.
All right, any questions? No questions. Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven point four. District Administrator Dr. Kristen Mueller will present the School District of Holman Strategic Plan. This item will appear on the July twenty-eighth consent agenda.
Good evening. Okay, so this should look familiar to everybody. This is our current strategic plan. And just kind of as a refresher, um, our vision there, belong, serve, succeed. That's what we aspire to be. That's what success really looks like for us in the School District of Holman. Then our mission, preparing students for tomorrow through an engaging and inclusive educational community today. That's really the purpose of our district and that's really just what we do every day. And then our core values, empowerment, equity, excellence, integrity and safety. That is really, um, our key beliefs. It's who we are and how we operate as individuals and what we would expect of all of our employees, um, and those that work within our school district. And then over to the right, um, those are currently what we call our focus areas or you'll often sometimes hear them referred to as pillars. Um, so really those are kind of our buckets, um, of what we really focus all of our work around. So that's our currently what it looks like, just kind of as a refresher. And then from that, we have our dashboard, which we have measures that we report on annually at the um, annual meeting and track just to kind of really what it is. It's kind of like a dashboard of a car. We need to make sure that we aren't just focusing on one area, because if you do that, then you might go south in another area. So it really keeps a nice balance, um, to keep your organization healthy. So with that, we're gonna get into kind of our journey that we've had. Um, first, I just want to take a moment to really think, um, in January, we had a strategic planning session um, with community members and we had some staff and some students and many of you sitting at the board table and our leadership members got together and really had a nice, um, community engagement session around updating our strategic plan. And it was really neat, cause we started with just, let's look at our vision, belong, serve, succeed and, um, where do you see that action happening? Is it something we want to still keep or not? And really what we learned out of that is there was some differences in what people like, what does serve really mean? Or what does succeed mean in the School District of Holman? And it was really great to hear different perspectives. So then we knew some of our work would be to define those and make sure that we all understand what that means in our school district. Um, and then from then, we took all the input from that, um, strategic planning, community engagement session and brought it to our leadership team and we worked on definitions from all that input, which I'll share with you this evening. And then from there, we also started to look at, um, our focus areas and really updating our descriptors um, within those focus areas and then from there are measures. Um, and then we had a board workshop and had some time together with that and now I am here tonight to share with you the proposed draft. So I just want to take a minute, cause really this is gonna be really important as we start our new school year. So really we refresh our strategic plan every five years. So this will be starting for our twenty-five, twenty-six school year and go through twenty, twenty-thirty. And really, um, took a lot of time to really define belong, serve, succeed. Um, I think belong, most people seem to understand that and really talk, as you can see from the definition there, we really want people to feel welcome, safe, accepted, um, be respected, valued and really have a place where they feel their voices being heard. Um, as you heard from the presentation early, earlier tonight about our co-curricular opportunities, that mean, that really, you can see where we really, the belong fits into our vision in the district. And then serve, um, this one is, there is a lot in the, when we had our engagement, community engagement session, there's a lot of conversation of, is it the district serving the community? Is a community serving? Is a student serving? Like what does serve mean? So serving signifies our commitment to improve lives together by providing support to our students, staff and community. It means working together to ensure that our schools have the resources needed to educate our students. So by preparing students to be productive citizens, they will take initiative to actively contribute to the community. So really the serve is about what we're doing here, so that when students leave, they can really be productive citizens and really serve properly. Um, and actually we do a lot of modeling of that through actually a lot of our clubs and activities that we have and even coursework that we do, um, within our schools now. And then succeed, um, the definition that we came up with there, um, really, it talks a lot about, um, we were even toying with, is it a, is it really around growth? Or is it sus- is it succeed? And we came back around to, well, to succeed, we want people to grow. So it's building that growth mindset, um, in all that we do here, but also emphasizing the social, emotional, along with the academic role being. So it's about the well-rounded individual we want to produce, so that they can actually go out, be successful and continue their journey with a lot of pride in, you know, s- in adapt and learn as they move on from our School District to Holman. So these are the three definitions that will make sure are visual and out in the public and really start to, um, share more and more. So I would just thank everyone for, that was a lot of work and very well done. So I thank everyone for their contributions to that. So from that, I'm just gonna go into an overview. So this would be our, um, proposed strategic plan moving forward. Um, as you can see, the vision is the same, the mission remains the same and core values. So, um, where some of the changes occurred, where we still have student learning, fiscal workforce, um, it became engagement, not community engagement. And I'll go into the details of that. And then it's not health and safety, it's safety. So a little bit of change in what the names of those focus areas are. And then with that became some minor changes in the descriptions. So I'll go into those details, um, in the next slides. After, this is the overview of the dashboard that I'll go into the details of also with what measures were kind of, um, changed also. So I'm gonna do a comparison for you. So here with student learning, you can see what our past, um, plan looked like and what moving forward will be. Is the big change here is not only in the. Is, the big change here is not only in the description. So our description now includes, um, not only academic growth, but social, emotional development. So with that was an added measure having to do with social, emotional learning. So we do give a survey to our students in grades three through twelve. So we will be monitoring that and bringing, and measuring those results moving forward on our dashboard, along with the prior academic measures that we had in the past. Um, in our fiscal area, there were no changes. And just as a reminder, these aren't the only measures that we do, we do a lot of other measures. But these are our main measures that we focus on from year to year. Um, in workforce, um, you can see there was a change in the descriptor. We wanted to emphasize that we want to recruit, engage, and retain a talented staff that reflects the needs and values of our students in the community. So really making sure we're hiring those people, um, that, um, match the needs of our, um, students and community. And with that, um, we also, basically, we had measured staff work-life balance in the past, but that was under health and safety. We just moved that over to workforce, because workforce is all about our staff. We wanna make sure they're engaged, we wanna make, you know, measure the retention of our, of our staff, and also just the work-life balance and how they're doing with that. Um, and these, these are a few. We do measure, um, extensively, um, in some of those areas also beyond this, uh, measure on the dashboard. And then here, um, you will see, community engagement is now engagement, and the description is new. Um, it is cultivate meaningful connections by actively listening, fostering partnerships, and creating opportunities for collaboration. Um, there's a lot of conversation around, we have many, many partnerships already, especially with, um, community partners, but also, um, through other plans that we have within the district, making sure that we're building more, um, partnerships and more, which would then allow more opportunities for our students. And help strengthen our relationships with just all different, um, partners and groups of folks in the community. As far as engagement goes, we wanna make sure we measure our student and family engagement. And the best way to measure that, in all the research I did, was if you feel like you belong at school. And those are questions we do ask on our annual survey, so we'll continue to do that. And then the one that we changed the measure on was open enrollment. Um, we really need to continue to focus on our open enrollment. And we've been closing our gap, but we're starting to see, I think, again, this past year, like how can we continue to, um, have families that are resident students stay in our School District of Holman, instead of making other choices? So this will help us continue to measure that. So really, this was the tough one. We have reduced the number of students open enrolling out of our district. So focus on the kids leaving. And if we can, instead of, before we would measure, what's the difference from those leaving and those coming? We just wanna focus on who's leaving and why, and how can we attract them? What can we do better to attract them to our district? And then another part, um, that came up was, as we know, the world is changing. Technology is everywhere and out there, and we really felt we need to start bringing in a measure around, um, really digital safety. So that is an addition under the safety. Um, we started where we, um, are starting with something simple, um, to measure, and that's just starting with, really, we phishing email clicks. So we really need to protect our infrastructure and protect what's happening within our school districts. You see a lot of districts getting hacked and information being, um, stolen. And we just wanna really protect the privacy of all of our data and everything happening. So we will, that's a new indicator. And then we'll also continue to expand, um, on that with conversations this upcoming year. Um, we were talking about, um, the AI world out there and how it is continuously changing. And we'll be doing other work on that. Um, we wanna start working on just some, um, guidelines for our staff and students, which is work we do. It's like an action step, so it doesn't really fit as a measure. So that will still be going on, but this was something measurable that we could measure that is starting us in the right direction with, um, innovation and technology. And then, as we have done before, is just our workers' comp. How do we continue to have a safe environment? Cause we keep seeing that number increase, which is really starting to exasperate our cost for insurance and so on. So how can we do better with that and keep people safe? And then, um, continue with the my school is safe question on our survey. So that is what we're proposing for the strategic plan. And as you know, we can, as far as the strategic plan goes, it's really this. And then we can, year after year, update these measures underneath it annually as needed, um, as times change. And that, and as to what we feel is most important for our work from year to year. So any questions or comments?
Any questions?
Um, just, just like some comments from me. I, I really appreciate the work that everyone did on this. I love kind of the new definitions of, um, succeed, for example. But I did wanna just mention, you know, we had a great discussion around workforce. Um, and the role that, you know, our, our staff play, along with our, our educators. So I'm thinking about educational assistants, bus drivers, nutrition staff. And, um, I like, Chris, that you acknowledged that there's lots of other measures happening that aren't, didn't make it to this, um, strategic plan. However, um, I don't think anyone here would disagree that how important, um, those staff are to, and really critical to having a very robust, um, you know, high-performing school system where, you know, they contribute so much to culture and engagement and a sense of belonging. So I just wanna kinda, to just acknowledge that, um, publicly, to say that we had a really big discussion about that.
Yeah, I think it's important, um, these are measures. And I think the important thing is in recognition of your staff. There's many other ways you can value and recognize staff. And we wanna continue, we started at the Fabulous Viking Award and Program years ago. And we continue to look at like, how, what are other ways? Cause not everyone likes to be recognized by an award or be called out in front of their peers. So really, as we move forward, really trying to figure out what are the different ways that our staff like to be recognized? Cause everyone has kind of different ways that they like, where, that makes them feel important. Because really, like you said, we did have a long discussion around the importance of, well, and we're a very unique district. A lot of districts don't have, like, we have our own transportation department, which is phenomenal. And we have our own nutrition services department, which is so phenomenal, that makes us such a high-quality district. Because they work in tandem daily with our principals and our educators and our educational assistants. And everyone working together, our maintenance and our custodial. It's amazing how they work together and they, what I love too, is they really try to understand each other and what their roles are and how they can support each other. And I think just continuing to figure out what ways, um, would work best in recognizing them. Because when you can do that, then we should see those retentions of all those, um, categories. And we wanna see all those categories and retentions of all those improved, which we do track in our annual report each year. So we'll just definitely keep an eye on those.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent, the consent agenda as provided.
To move.
Motion by Chris?
Second.
By Barb? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Alright, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Bridget.
I just wanted to say thank you to Jason. You survived, um, many, many questions tonight, and I thought, gave really great, you know, um, answers to some tough questions. And, um, it was apparent you did a lot of research in your, um, in your presentation, and it's just really appreciated.
Alright, Barb?
Just thanks to Jason for taking everything into consideration and, um, alleviating the possibility of having to cut teams next year, so I appreciate that.
Yep, Capagill?
Um, I wanna mirror what everyone else is saying in thanking Mr. Lula for being here tonight. I also would like to raise up that next week, we have the, um, along with activities, we have the Fall Sports Meeting. That'll be in two sessions. Those of you who that pertains to have already gotten an email today. But for those of you who are even just interested and want to know more information, that there is, if you wanna participate in any fall sports, specifically sports, that, that, those meetings are next week in the evening. I believe the first session is at five fifteen. So that's a, also a time when this conversation of the fees and how that's going to work out will probably be addressed and more questions can be answered.
Alright, Kadisha?
I'll echo the thanks to Jason. I think, um, it's very clear that, uh, a lot of our students benefit from these programs. So anyway, that we can continue to protect them and do our due diligence, and I, clearly you're doing yours, so I appreciate that work. I also just wanna give a shout out to all the community members who came in to help with the strategic plan. Um, the day that we did that planning meeting, the room was full. And like people were super, super engaged in the process. And hopefully we can, I mean, I'll just put the plug in, like hopefully we can continue to grow how many people are coming and getting involved in those things. Um, because as we can see with the changes that were made, it, it does actually impact the process. And so, um, hopefully that's a, a good sign that we can continue to get people involved.
Okay, Chris?
Yep, just thanks to Mr. Lula for coming out and, and talking us through, uh, this, it's a pretty significant change, I think, for a lot of families. So, um, I know I had a lot of questions from my family, and he answered all of them tonight, so, uh, just thanks again.
Alright, Lindsay?
Yeah, thanks Jason for all the research that you've done too. It's really helpful to hear the comparisons, and I think parents really appreciate that. And, uh, second, what Kadisha said, just wanted to thank everybody who came in for the community sessions and worked on this. And administration too, worked hard on the strategic plan. I know it's a, it was a big effort getting that updated, so thanks, everybody.
Okay, Maggie?
I think I will just agree with everything that's been said already.
Okay, yeah, I agree, we had a really good discussion tonight, it was, it's been a good board meeting. Um, I also wanted to congratulate Mike Gasper and the nutrition team for earning a second USDA Healthy Meal Incentive Award. And I wanted to congratulate Daniel Ott for his fourth place science project finish at the International Science and Engineering Fair. And lastly, I wanted to say thank you to the Beer by Bike Brigade for zeroing, zeroing out lunch balances for five Lacrosse County School Districts, including the School District of Holman. So, thank you. Our upcoming board meeting schedule, um, our next three board meetings will be on July twenty-eighth, August eleventh, and August twenty-fifth at seven PM. And then on August twenty-sixth, it's already the back-to-school kickoff in the high school gym, so, coming up quickly. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
To move.
Chris has moved?
Second.
Kadisha? Has seconds to adjourn the meeting at eight oh four PM. Motion carried, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
How many of us are going to the thing on Friday?